Is everybody ready? Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council chambers. This is a regularly scheduled council committee of the whole meeting, a working session. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, November 2, 2021. The time is 9:00 a.m. We have a fairly full agenda today, and so we'll turn this meeting over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benes. Britt?
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a request to review the quotes to purchase a 2022 Sierra pickup for use by the sewer crew of the Public Works Department.
Okay, anybody here to give an update? Apparently not. So we're reviewing the quotes. Is apparently Britt and Sheri, based upon the mileage, the year of the old pickup truck, the vehicle replacement schedule is this within the context of what's budgeted on a regular basis for capital equipment? Is this a need that they have? Sheri?
Yes, Mayor, Council, this is, and I did budget $50,000 in the sewer for, sorry. And I believe Ed's estimates are well under that.
Okay, so, thank you. The recommendation is the purchase from Waschke in the amount of $43,783.13 to 2022 GMC Sierra, three-quarter ton double cab with a Fisher STL nine-foot-six-inch plow. The manufactured retail price is $44,455. Our price was $33,921, plus the plow price of $9,862.13, for a total from our interim Public Works Director Alto, who has recommended this be purchased in the amount of $43,783.13, plus any applicable taxes and fees. So looking for council action or information or requests or comments, Councilor Biondich.
Thank you. Was this in the capital outlay? And how often do we purchase vehicles?
I believe we have a vehicle replacement scheduled to some degree with some of the, but then there's a certain mileage, and I don't know how long it is. So if you could answer Councilor Biondich's question about this particular purchase, and then a little synopsis of, you know, how we address the needs of capital equipment, particularly when it comes to replacing vehicles. Sheri?
Sure. First of all, I do have a capital outlay for the general fund, which is basically departments that fall under the general fund. This here is an enterprise, just like recycling and the garbage trucks. Those were needed very badly, I believe, two years ago. And you guys raised the rates, and we did buy some. This one is well overdue, and the sewer is an enterprise, so.
Thank you. Do we determine that by miles or years?
Britt, you want to jump in on that one?
By both, Maya. It's been about four or five. I think it'll be five years in 2022. So what happens is this vehicle, and it doesn't, we don't get rid of it, the one that they're using now goes into the rotation for the not daily use, whereas Sewer Crew uses theirs daily. It's the most used vehicle we have because the Sewer Crew continually is, works almost seven days a week. They're constantly checking sewers and lift stations and such, so the vehicle's constantly running, much like a police car, constantly moving, constantly running. So the vehicle they're using now will go into the general rotation, go down to some of that repair crew or somebody else. And then, so the most-used trucks get replaced first, and then we trickle down to the least-used trucks.
So once this is purchased, then on the capital outlay, does that go back on for how many years?
Five.
Or miles?
Five years.
Five years. Okay, thank you.
And once again, this is an enterprise fund purchase as opposed to a general fund purchase, and I think when you do a vehicle replacement schedule, if I may, Britt and Sheri, is that there's three factors involved in that, is miles, what's the use, you know, how much it takes to use it, the wear and tear that it takes to use it on there, and then, of course, the year, the time, and the mileage, so. Thank you. So any other comments, questions about this? Councilor Biriboo?
Britt, are we going to hang on to this one, or are we going to trade it in? Going to hang on to it, okay, because I saw the trade-in value was 11,000-something. Okay.
So based upon that, it's three-quarter ton pickup truck, there's a plow, et cetera, on there. So the sticker price on the vehicle alone, as you know, was $44,000 with a deduct from us for a city purchase from Waschke in an amount of $33,000 and change, plus the plow attachment as well. So looking for additional comments or council action. Councilor Biondich?
Thank you. With the shortage of vehicles, is this readily available, or will there be a wait time on this?
I believe Ed has been scouting out, and I believe this is available, but we won't take possession until next year.
Okay, thank you. Looking for council action.
I'll also move mayor to purchase the vehicle for the sewer crew.
Okay, Councilor Biriboo moves to approve the purchase of the Sewer Crew vehicle in the amount previously stated from Waschke Motors. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Paulson, is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I know that there's a different set of taxes on vehicles, but I noticed on the plow, there's a $762.13 tax. Is that something we should not be paying because it's an accessory to a vehicle?
I think if you want to take a look at that, take a shot at that, the vehicle is a, it's called a vehicle tax right, and any ancillary equipment required by law to pay a sales tax, so. Sheri, any other information about that to answer Council Johnson's question?
I'll follow up with that, though.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is review the quotes for the KSB replacement mixer at wastewater treatment plant, and we have Paul Moe from People Service here.
It seems, Mr. Moe, we're replacing a lot of things at the water sewer treatment plant, much more than we did with the old system, it seems.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Yeah, this is, well, we have four mixers for our digesters. Because of the environment they're in, we go through these mixers. This one was purchased in 2012. It was rebuilt five years ago, and now it finally went. So we do have a brand-new one that we just put in. We did have two tanks, and I've since put it down to one tank because of the mixer issue. So this mixer will be a standby, so theoretically, it should be five years before we have to put it in, but because of the lead times on this, we have to have it for standby.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moe. Council? Council Johnson?
I will move that we authorize the purchase of the mixer for standby, so we're not in emergency situation in the future.
Okay, a motion to approve the purchase, the quote from KSB for the replacement mixer at the wastewater treatment plant, as recommended by Mr. Moe. Is there support? Support by Council Biondich, so it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Moe.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is approve the updated IT service agreement and resolution with Rogers Online Corporation.
So give us a little update on the difference between Rogers Online and Pantheon.
Pantheon does a lot of our software items, such as firewalls, servers, cloud-based systems. Rogers is actually the boots-on-the-ground person that's physically here, plugging in the computers and plugging in the items, doing the installs, squad car, computers, that you physically have to be here touching and doing.
And they're, they work hand-in-hand with Pantheon with respect to this?
Work together, yes.
Thank you very much, Britt. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was under the impression when we first contracted with Pantheon, and I'm trying to go back and find that contract, but I'm unable to, but the reason that we chose Pantheon is because they had the ability to provide the service with the FBI qualifications. And it appears to me that Rogers, Roger, kind of, Rogers Online kind of began working almost as a subcontractor to Pantheon. So I'm a little concerned why now we are bringing Rogers Online into a secondary contract when Pantheon, the reason the council voted Pantheon over CompuDyne, part of it was pricing, but the other was the FBI component. No, no, I just want to make sure.
Please continue, thank you.
So I guess I'd like to understand, I'm looking at the run of the bills just from this month, and we paid Pantheon $3,500 for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center professional services. I'm not seeing what we paid to Pantheon for the actual City of Virginia City Hall services. So I'd like to, before we move this forward, I would actually like to look at Pantheon's contract, original contract, and then try to understand at what time Rogers, what point in that contract did Rogers Online start working with Pantheon? And at that point, I was under the assumption that he was working as a subcontractor for Pantheon, and that was part of the service that we were receiving as a City of Virginia from Pantheon. I don't know if that makes sense. So I would not be comfortable moving this forward until I get that kind of clarification and am able to compare the original contract that we had with Pantheon. Thank you.
So as a clarification, if I may, Britt, for the software updates, the cloud-based information, all that kind of stuff, with respect to the preparation, storage of documents, storage of data, all those kind of things, and the repair work on the computer systems themselves, if there's a ticket that has to be generated, Pantheon takes care of that, all the troubleshooting there, that's the contract we have with Pantheon. The other portion of it is, is the, like you said, boots-on-the-ground, we're plugging in the computers. If a computer comes in, Rogers Online theoretically, based upon the contract, installs them and those kind of things, and so the hardware portion of it is Rogers Online, and the software portion of it is Pantheon, is that correct?
Not necessarily, no. No, we'll get some more information and come back to the council.
Very good, thank you very much. So we'll hold this in abeyance until we get additional information. You required a motion and wish to do that?
We should probably table it.
Okay, Councilor Paulson?
I'll move to table with the caveat that when we do reconvene, that we have before is the original Pantheon documentation of the contract, and then also information of when Rogers Online began to work with Pantheon originally. Thank you.
And the motion is moved to table with additional information to be gathered by staff and be presented at a future meeting. Is there support? Support by Council Biondich, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is review the proposed agreement for the use of city facilities at Rockridge Public Schools, 2909, for the use of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center and other city facilities for 2021 and 2022 school year.
Okay, this was something that was previously discussed. Councilor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. So this contract seems to mirror the original contract between 2018 and 20, school year 2018 to school years 2021. The amount has increased for the ice time. Could you give us some update as to what other items have changed that aren't necessarily mirrored from the original contract?
We did take out the back rink fee and added that. That's where the increase comes from, that was lumped into the main fee, now that there is no back rink anymore.
Is this contract being presented to 2909?
No.
Thank you.
I believe that might be the only.
I think there are the day, or the game passes in there as well.
From the original, from the 2018 contract? Yes, sorry.
Yep, yep, so that's added in there as well.
Yep, and that, like Brian mentioned, that was simply because our requirement with our sponsorship agreement means we have to give them passes, so we are asking the school to give us passes so that we can give them passes without any cost to the city.
Okay, and then the only other language, and I had talked to Brian Lindsay, our city attorney, and I know Colleen, you're here, so I'm not sure if he had mentioned this to you, but I want to, as we're going forward in a different matter in our closed session, I want to confirm that the city's policy would be the control policy, and the school would be renting the ice and the locker rooms, but the other policies, so the students would fall under the school policy for any COVID-19 mandate or COVID-19 requirements from the Minnesota High School League, but spectators would fall under the city's policy of our, of the city's COVID-19 policy. Is that correct?
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, so does that need to be reflected in the contract so we don't have any issues moving forward with any sporting events?
I think if the council would like that, we could certainly do that, if you want to have clarification.
I'm not sure if I can make a motion within this discussion, but I would move to make that, just that clarification so that going forward, it's clear what is being rented by the school, and then what control policies, or what policies take. I guess Brian, our city attorney, used the term "control." So I'm using that term, thank you.
So what?
Make that motion.
So what falls under the school responsibility as opposed to what falls under our responsibility, and what control means, is that correct?
That's correct.
So the motion, the proper motion, Colleen, if you would, just to verify the motion from Council Paulson, and she'll verify if that's the correct motion, so we get that for the record. What would that motion be?
It would be that we would amend the contract to add a provision with respect to control versus, the city versus the school district, and we just have a provision added to the contract.
Thank you. So did you get that, Pam? So it has been moved by Council Paulson and supported by Council Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Council Johnson?
Thank you, Councilor Paulson, for bringing that up. I think whatever side you're on, or where you sit, that we have that clarification now, I think is going to save us a lot of time and staff resources in the future that it's clear going into this, so I appreciate you taking the time to do that, thank you.
Okay, that motion been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Council Freely?
Just really quickly, I, thank you, Mayor, I thought in a previous draft, there was language indicating which coaching personnel would have key to access to the building so that we wouldn't have to go through city personnel to have access, and I didn't see this in this draft. Just kind of FYI, that should be defined.
Let's vote on this particular motion that was set forth, and then we can get an answer for you on that particular part, because we'll likely have to either move or not move on the contract itself. So there is just a motion on the floor right now to make an amendment specifically to that, and so we haven't discussed the entire contract, which comes after this vote. So it's been moved and supported on the amendment with respect to the control issue between the city and the school, and the identification of at what period of time does the school have control and what portions we do. And we have been moved and supported based upon a recommendation from our city attorney and the movement and support from our, from Council Paulson and Council Johnson as a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, in answer to Council Freely's question with respect to the information in the contract related to controlled access to the building. Do we have a controlled access policy?
Not a policy per se, but we do control the access of the building.
We do. And so the question by Council Freely is?
That we delineate or define who in fact will have accessibility to the building that's not an employee of the city. School district officials and coaches will have to have access to the building without having to go through the city.
And then that language is requested to be in the contract as well?
Yep, we can add that back in.
So do you need a motion to add that in?
No, I can find that.
To define that, okay, thank you. Okay, so we're looking for additional discussion or council action related to the entire contract itself. Council Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, and I honestly didn't look at this real closely, but I know, I think I had brought up in the last meeting about making sure we're defining when it's coach's practice and making sure that, or, sorry, captain's practice, and I don't know that that's a contract thing, but I do want to bring that up again, that we are, because in that situation, our staff would have to be present to open and close and unlock doors because they wouldn't have access, because that's not a school-sanctioned activity. So maybe that fits under that same, that same area where when it's a captain's practice, which is a no-contact time through the league, whoever's there, they're not utilized, I guess, what I'm saying is they're not, the coach isn't handing a parent their access card and saying, here, you can open up the locker rooms and stuff, because then that would fall under school responsibility if, and I think we need to be really clear about that with the school and their staff, that if it's truly a parent-sanctioned captain's practice, that they shouldn't be borrowing out their cards or their keys to allow access, that our staff should be opening and closing, or however that's clearly defined. I'm just concerned that now that we have the ability to control for the legal term, that we are making sure we're on top of that, because I'd hate to see something happen during a captain's practice, and now the school knew about it because they use their access codes, or their access fobs.
Johnson, and I think we definitely can address that in the key section, that there shall be no, especially during those kind of things, and that if there is going to be a practice where there is not going to be, they need to schedule it with the staff so that we can ensure that we have somebody in the building at all times, and the doors are open, using the proper protocol, not sharing keys. If it's found that keys are shared, there will be repercussions to that matter.
Thank you very much.
And I allude back to the fact that having a policy, whether it's a policy related to all-city access, or just for the policy with respect to the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, I just, we had a policy when I worked in the metro for car access control, and once that was powers abused, those individuals are automatically eliminated from access and access to that, or the badge itself, the badge access control. So we make those determinations of how that moves forward, based upon our liability and the questions surrounding that. So short of not having a policy, this is something we would monitor on a regular basis to ensure that Council Johnson's questions, our concerns about liability is answered. And so it looks as though there's some changes that have to be made before we approve this contract, so as this discussion moves forward, we'll go to Council Freely, but as this discussion moves forward, we may have to, I would look at council action to approve the addendums that are requested and the information that's being asked, be put in the contract so that we can take a look at taking council action for formal adoption or not adoption of it at the next council meeting, because it, right now, we're using the facility as we speak. So I think it's important for us to be able to determine the contract moving forward, but with the information that's being requested to be added to the contract, and just to read as a point of information, obviously, that this has not been approved by the school, this is just our, we just still have to be presenting to the school as well, so. Council Freely?
Yeah, Council Johnson, my understanding of captain's practices is maybe different than yours. Like, captain's practices, any and all that I had ever been involved in, in the time that I coached, I was always supervising, but not instructing. So the coaches are the ones that will be opening the building and allowing the student athletes to utilize the facility, but they will not be able to provide instruction on ice. That's my understanding, so I don't think there would be anybody that would be giving their key to somebody that's not affiliated with the coaching staff to allow the captain's practice to occur. The captain's practice would be under the supervision of the coaching staff, but they are not allowed at that time to provide instruction or coaching. That's my understanding.
Yeah, thank you, Council Freely. Okay, there's been some requests, one by a motion, the other by suggestion, direction to staff to make adjustments to the contract. So no other, Council Johnson?
To the mayor's point about them being there now, does that mean we're operating under the old agreement until there's a new agreement, or where are we legally standing if, where are we?
Colleen?
I would assume that we are operating on whatever contract is in place now that hasn't, this hasn't been agreed to, so this wouldn't be enforced.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. So looking for council action with respect to the, we've reviewed and taken a look at the agreement, some suggestions, one by motion, coupled by a direction to city staff to make that change. So the use of the city facilities with the Rockridge Public Schools, 2909, for the use of the Iron Range Motors Event Center for the 2021-2022 school year. Looking for council action with relation to this, Council Paulson?
I'll move, I guess, the whole thing forward with the two addendums as discussed.
Thank you. Council Johnson moves to approve, move to this council for further adoption with those, by Council Paulson, for further adoption and discussion at the next council meeting. Is there support?
Support for discussion?
Support by Council Freely, and further discussion, Council Johnson?
Thank you. I supported, but, or did you too? Sorry. Can, Britt, when you make those adjustments, can you make them bolder, just so they stand out, and then when we send them the draft, we can normally format it? I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is discuss rental pricing for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, and this just is a, we have heard, I have heard a lot of discussion from public that they've been calling council members regarding the pricing at the facility. And I do have Tyler Lundin and Tracy Lundin here, and I just wanted to reiterate to the council that we have set a pricing structure for the facility at the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. The Lundins are using the pricing schedule that we have set forward, and then I know public, it's not the same price as the old Miners Building, it's not the same building as the old Miners Building, but I wanted to bring it up for discussion today, that if we wanted to change the pricing, that today is the day we should probably talk about that. If we're having problems with the price of the building, let's discuss it openly in front of the public and in a public meeting.
Thank you, Britt. Well, I have a couple quick questions, and I did have a conversation with Tyler on a specific issue, directing my calls to Tyler and with respect to the concerns with respect to pricing, one of which, I just got another call from this vendor who's supposedly have something coming next week. He must have called me 25 times, and then I've met with the people from the, from the Iron Range Motor Travel Show, those kind of things. I did meet with them, not on a formal setting, but as one of the representatives is, works for, owns and operates a business in town, I'm just there doing retail business, but ask that question. I passed the information on yesterday again. I did give Tyler a heads-up, and he knows the issues, and so I did give an email that was given to me by this business owner, and just passed it on to you moving forward. So the big issue I have is, is that if we've made a commitment prior to us making a, setting these prices for the new Iron Trail Motors Event Center, if we made a commitment prior to that, I think we should need to honor those commitments. The pricing moving forward, you know, those are the prices we have to pay. I would like to point out one thing with respect to. I would like to point out one thing with respect to something that's in the file. You got a wedding package, and you got a rental package for the building itself. It seems as though the rental of the building for the wedding package, just the rental for the facility, is higher than for other events. And so I guess I'm a little confused about that as well. So those are just my comments as we talk about this moving forward. I would seek for some clarification. I know that if you have a previous, we had a previous contract where there was a commitment, whether it be verbally or through an email or through some kind of other document, we need to honor those commitments. Any other pricing structures that are set by, by what we set is, moving forward, is the pricing structure that needs to be remained in place. So, thank you. Council Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I have two points. One, the design committee met last Monday, and we had a lengthy discussion about the pricing, and exactly what is this building used for. I got a hang-up phone call from the person who's renting next year, because I, or next week, because I'm not for, and I honestly don't know that the new Iron Trail Motors' Event Center is the proper venue for craft sales and bake sales and rummage sales and that kind of thing. That was the discussion we had as a team two Mondays ago, last Monday. When did we just meet? Council Paulson and Council Bianic and I, and the rest of the design team that have worked on this building for two years. And I think that's a very valid point to be considering. There are multiple venues around town that, that could be used. There's several churches, there's the Elks Club, there is this senior center, there's a lot. I think this has to do with doing things differently. This building is different. It is in no shape, waveform, anything equivalent to the previous building. There, the only thing that's similar is there's extra rooms, and there's ice sheets. Other than that, they're, they're, it's different. As for the package, the pricing, we sat here and we made that decision. All of us were, all seven of us were in this room along with all the staff, and we made decisions past them, and we need to stick by them. We cannot go backwards and go, oh yeah, you've been there for 20 years, we're just going to keep it going. Anytime anybody says anything to me about renting, whether it's the pavilion, or it's the ice rink, or I, if it's the ice, if it's anything at the new building, I just say, call, call Tyler, call the city, ask for Tyler. That's it. I don't entertain any arguments, I don't listen, because I can't change it. I'm one vote out of seven that help make these decisions when we set the rates. And anything less is counterproductive for Tyler and their group. Anything less than that is saying, well, let me as a counselor throw my weight around and get you what you want. And we just can't be doing that, because there's seven of us, and there's going to be, if we all did that, there would be seven of us giving people deals, and the building would be closed next year. The whole thought of this, our whole, the whole thing about this is to eventually get that building to break even. Like, that's more or less what the goal is. We don't want to be, we were subsidizing the miners for years and years and years. We, it was part of the budget, we just sank money into it as a city. The whole idea of this new building is to break even, to provide a world-class venue for whatever folks are doing. And, and that, people don't, it frustrates me, because we contractor, contract with the Lundins to do what they do very well professionally. And it's, it's a totally different animal, and we need to allow them to do their job. I would think, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there was something unsurmountable or something you couldn't fix, you would probably go to Brian first, and then from Ryan to Brett, and then Brett would bring it to us as a council. I would think that's the protocol we would follow. It's a beautiful building. And I'll say this again, people want a discount, your discount is being able to hold your event in a world-class facility without having to go to Duluth and rent hotel rooms and pay for dinners when your, when your kids are getting married, or your grandkids are getting married, or whatever. I think we just need to be solid on what we did. Anything less shoots ourselves in the foot. At the design team meeting, we discussed what it would look like if we lowered rates. We discussed what research has been, and the Lundins weren't present. I'm going to let you know, they weren't there telling us. This was us having a discussion with the professionals in the room. Our rates are actually low when it comes to per square foot and for what people are getting. When, when we rent that facility, we are, we are a deal in itself, just the way we have it set. So I'm concerned that if we continue to let people try to talk us as elected officials into changing things for them, then we have to change it for everybody. We have to be consistent, we have to do it. So I'm, I'm, I think we should, as we move forward, we're going to be looking at how do we get these prices where they're going to be, they're competitive. There's the Mountain Iron Community Center to hold a craft sale. And if you're resident at Mountain Iron, you get a discount over there. So I, I just can't thank the Lundins enough for what they've done. I don't know how many of you know that during open house, or during our grand opening week, the Lundins held, had a live broadcast from Village Inn and talked about the city. They did that. That wasn't something we paid them to do, that wasn't, that was just part of what they do. So I can't thank Tyler enough for what he, the stuff he does. Yesterday on Facebook, the, they had given a tour to the Masabi Symphony Orchestra, and they had some good things to say about that. That, that's a good venue for that. Those are people, I mean, I know, I apologize for rambling, but I just, I guess I'm frustrated because we set prices in this room, and now we're changing the rules, or we're discussing changing the rules, or whatever. And we actually had that discussion then about, this is what we're doing, we all need to be firm on it. So I'm fine with where it sits. I appreciate the Lundins for the work they do, and for the headaches they're enduring to get us, and we need to continue moving forward with this building. Thank you.
Before we go to Council Paulson, I'd just like to clarify, I don't think anybody in this room, I don't think any city council is asking for a specific venue to have a discount for this or that, the other thing. The information we get, we get these requests, we forward them, which I have done, and I'm sure other councils have done as well. My only concern is that if we've made a prior commitment to a venue, if we had made a prior commitment to a venue before these pricing changes are, and there's documentation, information to, that shows that, then we have to honor it, that's all. The pricing, I don't have a problem with the pricing, I think it's, I think the pricings are high, I think we're pricing ourselves some of these venues out of, out of the ability to use the facility, but there are other venues that they can use. I think we've taken a, a, a financial performer approach to putting this together, so that we can cash flow this facility, no question about that. I'm just saying that if there are prior commitments that were in writing, based upon our discussions in the past, before we made these changes, then we have to honor those commitments. If there are commitments out there, we honor them. If they're not, we, we, we ensure that the pricing stays the same. I don't think anybody's asking for an individual organization to get a discount as a result, or, or, because that's a, that's a snowball and goes down the hill, and you're never going to be able to take, get a handle on it. We set the pricing, that's the way it is. Unfortunately, we are going to price some venues, some organizations out of purchasing that or utilizing that facility, because they're small venues and they can't afford the pricing structure that we have. We do have a financial obligation to make sure this cash flows, as Council Johnson says. But I think if we have a prior commitment somewhere, and it's in writing, we need to honor it. That's all I'm saying. There may or not be, may or may not be something out there that's the case. But we honor the commitment that we made, we have the Lundin Group doing the bookings based upon the pricing structure we've, we've directed them to do, so that's the way we market, and I concur with that. Council Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I've, I've got a couple of points as well. The first one I want to ask is, who is hosting the Iron Trail Motors' Event Center website? Who's, who's hosting that ISP address?
We'll ask Tyler and Mr., Mr., Tyler Lundin, Mr. Tracy Lundin to come forward.
Marney.
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 Where do we start? With that question, the Lundin Group does that based on the information we're providing?
Do you have a green light on there?
Oh.
Usually people tell me I talk too loud, anyway.
You're loud enough, but just in case.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Tracy.
So just, the reason I'm asking is, we brought this up a couple, I've brought up the website a couple times, and it takes a while to populate. It's a little slower, so I don't know if that's a bandwidth issue, or if we need to, the city needs to help bump that up.
The, the whole website is in the process of being redone. We're just waiting for pictures of the various grand opening events, and as you know, we kind of had a little bit of a curve ball thrown at us back last summer when the naming rights thing happened, and we had to virtually stop all the other marketing work and booking work we were doing, all hands on deck to rebrand the facility. And, you know, people are finding little problems still to this day, because there are lots of things that just drift around out in the wild, wild west of the internet, as you all know.
So I guess I just want to offer if the city needs to facilitate or assist or help that, that we would allow staff to help.
Thank you.
You know, facilitate that need.
And we do communicate with Brett.
Yeah, and then the, the second thing, Tracy and Tyler, is when I've been searching, there's no, I think part of the problem, or part of what we're hearing feedback on is, the packages aren't listed. And I, and I under, on the website, they're not, I can't get to, like, even if it's all a cart, here's how much it's going to cost for a microphone, or the dance floor, or, you know, a wedding package, here's the ballroom, here's our nonprofit pricing. So just for example, I had someone from the Servicemen's Club come, and they have a two-year, where they get, like, the Virginia area, or the Virginia Servicemen's Club would get awarded, you know, hosting their big events, and it's up 800 to 1,000 people that come, and they came and they wanted to inquire, and they wanted to, so I gave them some information, but I couldn't print anything, or go to the website and say, okay, here's what nonprofit rates are. So I think that would eliminate a lot of the confusion, and, and to back that up. So I have a, a child who is looking to get married, and that is pretty much what I've seen, what we've seen across the board in searching from the North Shore to Duluth to here, is that most of those places, they just, they have the caption page, you, you fill out the caption page, and then someone contacts you, or you call in. They really don't readily put that information out there with their package rates. That's kind of what I've seen as the standard or the norm. I don't know if, you're shaking your head, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. We, we don't have the packages for the weddings on there, because I like, and we like talking to the client, rather than, you know, putting everything on the website and having it available, because if we did that, they, you know, they would be able to read something, but they wouldn't be able to talk to us and get a feel for the building. It's just a more personal, personal interaction with the client, potential client. And, excuse me, I got a little cold. But that's been working out better for us to not have all the packages on there. We do have the birthday packages on there, the sports packages, as well as our nonprofit rates, we are putting that up with the website update. But we don't have the actual packages for like trade shows, meetings, because we feel like, collectively as a group, and with Brian and Brett and conversations, that it takes away from that interaction with the potential client.
Well, it's not a one-size-fits-all, they're all, most of them are so different. I've been in the wedding industry for about 34 years, and not any two realistically are alike. Tyler can attest to this, when he was doing the extensive research, going back to this whole pricing issue. Probably 200 to 300 hours of research on venue prices within a 200-mile, three-state radius. Couldn't just pull that pricing information off too many websites. In some case, you almost have to call and say, I'm getting married, what does it cost? You know, it's typically a lot of that issue.
And I mean, I appreciate that, and that's been my, you know, when we've researched different venues, that's kind of what we've seen as the industry's norm or standard. What I would also say, though, is that this is a city-owned facility, and I do think transparency is important. And so that's where I kind of have a little bit of, we need to have a balance. And when I had that nonprofit servicemen's organization come, I, I couldn't even give them anything, you know, other than passing on your information. So I do think that we should have some of that information out there. I do know the bumpers, and I was kind of more like on the conference side, wedding side. So I don't, I don't know what the, the rest of the council would think, but I, I think that's part of why some of us are getting calls, because there is that, that confusion, because there's nothing on the website to give that information. So I think that warrants a conversation.
We do whatever you folks tell us to. I mean, if you want us to do that, we'll do it. We, do we always agree? No, there's a lot of things about this project I don't agree with at all. And we could, I could bend your ears, but that's not what you're paying us to do, you're paying us to put that in.
And I'm just one voice with some experiences that I just wanted to kind of let you know what those experiences have been, and what some of those requests have been. And in the past, our city, on our city website, our outbuildings have been listed, like, you know, here's the, here's the gazebo rental, I think it's 75 bucks, here's the Klein Coupé Letty. And some of those things are pretty straightforward, so when somebody goes to look and wants to reserve the date, they know how much kind of upfront they're, they're looking to spend for their event. So I just, I think it would warrant a little bit more conversation. And then just to echo Counselor Johnson, in our design team last meeting, we, we talked about, you know, the break-even point of, of the Met, or the Iron Trail Motors' Event Center. I'm sorry I used the word Met, because it was from a spreadsheet originally given from Isaac Sports Group. But those numbers were at a $22 million facility, now we have a $38 million facility, so obviously that's going to cash flow differently. So I think we, we just really had a conversation on where do, where does, what is the city's expectations on a break-even point? And at that spreadsheet five-year mark, even Isaac Sports Group forecasted that we would be negative 305,000, I think it was. So if you plug in the numbers at 38 million, that's obviously going to cash flow differently, depending upon what the prices of these packages are and the, and the usage of the facility. But I think it's, it's important we have these conversations and be as transparent as we can to the general public. I do think if there's just a flat rate for nonprofits, that that needs to be really out there and transparent, because that's where some of these folks are going, oh my gosh, I'm hearing how much it is for a wedding, and we can't afford that for our event, and I want to make sure that people understand that a nonprofit has a different rate. So, but I do think it warrants a little bit more conversation, and that's just all that I, I wanted to add. And then if you do need more bandwidth, or something to generate that quicker loading up of the website, that we could help facilitate that if need be. Thank you.
And I just have one court, one question about, and I probably should be talking to this about Brian. I'm getting some calls from members of the community, outside the community, they want to rent the facility. This has nothing to do with your contract with us, I don't believe. So when, you know, you get, somebody calls the event center, and they get the recording from our park erect director, Brian Silver. He says, if you look in the book, or event, go to www.reckdeck.com. There should be an easier way, or easier access point, you know, to, to get there. And so, you know, why can't we just call and then, and then leave our booking information on there and have someone call us back? Why do I have to go through this website thing? It's, it's, it's a pain. And I got this from people who are outside the area, that are looking to speak to someone, but they go on the Reck Deck deal, and then, and then they, they book, you know, they want to book, but they want to talk to somebody. So how, I guess, how does that synergy work with respect to getting a quicker access to what you, we, they need from you? Tracy?
Well, to my knowledge, and the way it works, because I sit in the office, a lot of times right next door to Tyler's office, all the published phone numbers that are on the Iron Trail Motors' Event Center rap sheets and everything else, publish a phone number that goes directly to a special app on his phone. So those numbers should be going directly to him. Now, some people are still, would circumvent be the right word, the system in calling Parks and Recreation Department.
That's what's happening.
Or old information. But all of the new stuff, and granted, there has been a ton of new stuff, particularly that was prompted by this naming rights thing, but everything we have transferred over, excuse me, has that phone number that rings directly to Tyler. So it, it's a process, so, like everything, certainly would be the first person to stand before all of you, in, in being humble and honest and saying, there's growing pains. I think you all remember, I stood here about a year ago. I think you all remember, I stood here about a year ago, over a year ago, saying you'd need nine or eleven positions to run this building effectively. And I think to the best of my knowledge and the standpoint, full-time besides us, you have two. I, I mean Brian and Jim that are there. And so, I mean, that's something that, there's just growing pains. And I think that Tyler and Jim have a very good synergy building up where they're coordinating and communicating a lot of information. I know Ty was up here yesterday, gave what, four or five tours yesterday? And it's regular, a lot of tours. Not a lot of complaining about pricing too, I might add, but that's the way it always works. The complaints are the ones you'll hear. You won't hear the people, you know, call you and say, I called the, the center and I thought, boy, your wedding prices are reasonable, because he is hearing some of that too.
Certainly.
Now, to, to, to this, that if it's okay, that the mayor brought up this, this email, which still, by the way, was on Met.
Yeah, and, and before you move forward, I just want to reiterate that I'm not asking for, for an adjustment. I'm not asking for anything. I'm just passing on the information that was provided to me to the proper individuals who could address the issue.
And I think I just wanted to give you an explanation. Because the prices that he gave them are the prices that were voted on and approved by the council. There's a little change from the tired building that is no longer there to the thirty-eight million dollar world classes somebody put at Event Center. And some of these prices were voted on as all-a-cart prices. Those are the rental fees. I think the organization you're referring to was kind of used to getting absolutely everything given to them in one price. And that would be a good question to ask though, because typically, and again, I'm going to rely back on my experience from doing this as an expo producer, which is what they're doing. I pay rent and then I pay for all of the add-ons, whether that's electricity, whether that's pipe and drape, whether that's an extra chair in a booth or a table. That stuff isn't given to me by any venue I've ever worked with. It's added on to the rent. And maybe when we did all this stuff, there wasn't the clarity. Now Tyler, in all fairness, just reached out to the group and Mayor, I recall once you and I talking that, that that group had reached out before or through Britt saying that there wasn't communication way back about the time of that email or a little bit later, when in fact Tyler had made numerous attempts to communicate with the person that that email is addressed to, but that wasn't being communicated to the business people on that board.
Right.
So it's been a little bit of a communication issue. I won't say anything bad about anybody. There's been communication, but I'm going to kind of plead that I think we've done a pretty good job of trying to get that communication across. But that is your price difference. If they paid a hundred before, then the new price is two hundred, this is just all hypothetical. The new price is plus, things that the city can't really even provide them. I don't believe you have enough pipe and drape in that building to do what you have to. So what in theory you're being asked to do is include something you don't even own, that you're going to have to go, or Brian or Jim, you're going to have to go rent on behalf of the city, so you can give it free to them.
And, and I, and I believe that's the purpose of me as a pass-through, for you to work that out. I don't have an issue with it. I, I received the information. I, I did what we were supposed to do, is directly and give it to you for, for, to work it out.
And we want that event there.
Right. And, and so whether it comes there or not, whether there's an agreement or not, you know, it was my duty and obligation, like it is with every single elected official, any information to pass on to proper individuals for consideration and discussion. So that's what happened in that case. So whatever you work out, that's what you work out. The price is structured as the way it is. We voted on it, we stand by that, so.
Thank you. And we, we just don't want to, you know, and I'll close quickly. We just don't want to be, we're the messengers here. The process was extensive, the research extensive, they went through Brian, the Parks and Recreation Board and the council approved every step along the way. But we're the ones that end up getting the, the hit when somebody doesn't like something.
We're the sounding board.
We are. And sometimes we're the ones that are the whipping boys as well. And I thought most of that had gone away, but it's reemerged its, its head and frankly, I don't care for it. Then, but, you know, we do the best we can to come, like, we weren't asked to be here today, but I said, let's, let's come, because I knew there were some questions, so let's, let's come and address it.
Thank you, Tracy. If you just hang on for a minute, before we go to Counselor Paulson and then over to Counselor Biondich. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you both for coming. I mean, I, I think you're doing a fantastic job and I really appreciate, we all know how hard that was, the grand opening. I mean, we were under construction still and just, you know, things were, you did, we all did the best we could with that, you know, time. I just want to, I haven't heard anything negative, just so you, so you know. Haven't heard a thing negative, just, the question is mainly for the people that have reached out to me has been more pricing issues. And then when I just went on the website, on the contact page, it circles back around to the email caption. It, on the birthday party package for the bumper cars or skating, then it has the seven four eight, seven five oh six, or email Tyler at irontrailmotorseventcenter.com. But maybe on that, where it, on the contact tab, maybe stick that same phone number and then they can just dial through.
We're working on the whole website.
Yeah.
Literally, they're doing it as we're up here.
That's, that's why I keep looking at my phone, Andrew's texting me a few things. So yeah, we're, the whole website is going to get revamped, you know, we're really.
I was just addressing maybe why they're bypassing this and going to Park and Rec, because they, they don't know how to find the phone number.
We're really, you know, I'm, I'm a numbers guy and I don't like wasting anyone's money. Sorry, I talk loud, just like my dad. We, I don't like wasting money, especially when it's not my money. And, you know, with the website, we're waiting on pictures that we got now. So we were, we've been making adjustments as we've been going because we've already had theoretically redo the whole website once, which was, you know, we had to, it cost the city more money because of like last minute, you know, changes and, you know, name changes, which that, it takes a lot of time and a lot of work. So we've been trying to gradually make changes so we're not double billing, you know, because it shouldn't have been double billed in the first place, in my opinion. So we're just, we're trying to be really, you know, cautious about money and your spending with us and we're just making sure that we're not wasting any time.
And, and I, that's all I wanted to add is just that, I know, I understand you're, you're redoing it, but maybe that's where the confusion was, because when they go online and they hit contact, it goes to the, you've got to fill out that caption page or that, you know, request information page. So just a point of order would be to stick the number on there. Thank you.
Right, right point.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. So anything else, any, Counselor Biondich, sorry.
I also have not heard anything negative, so I just want to pass that on to you. At our design meeting, we did have discussion on pricing, which, you know, I, I questioned a few things that were brought forward. Number one is, at the Miners, they did not have the facility they have today. Things were breaking, things needed to be improved and the price would have still gone up. So for this new facility, I don't think the prices are out of line, only because I have children that don't live here and I have gone to events, they've held birthday parties, the prices are not out of line. So I don't have so much an issue with what we discussed at our meeting is people, we do have that adjustment period, that three years of people that have rented consistently over time, where it's a gradual step up. It's not an immediate jump. And you're right, when you rent, I, when I had my flower shop, I would attend shows, I rented my space and I rented everything that went along with the space. It wasn't an all-included package because some people didn't need as much as others. So I'm, I'm sad that people feel that it's, it's out of line. To me, it is, in speaking with Jim Hunt, our prices were actually lower than some other facilities that are nearby. And perhaps some of these venues, the, the places that they used to have their events or their shows, there are other locations that can still accommodate that. And one of them that comes to mind is our mall. That has a lot of empty space, a long corridor that they could set up their booths in. So I, I don't have an issue with pricing or what, what we've done. We need to support that building. People voted to put that building up and we have to keep it going and that does mean, unfortunately, increased pricing, but you get what you pay for and it's a beautiful facility.
And to what you're saying about craft show type events, I do, I don't do those kind of events, but we have a few summer festivals that have those vendors and they do not pay a lot of money. It's a lot less than what you would pay to exhibit at a floral expo somewhere. They're used to paying fifty, sixty-five, seventy-five dollars to be there for a day. So would a promoter of a craft event be upset by new prices? Yes, because to what I think I've heard here from several of you, those events typically are at malls or they're at community centers down there. They have a number of them just down the road at the Shrine, the Shrine Facility. About the only ones you'll see at the Duluth Entertainment Convention Center are like what we have at the Iron Trail Motors and that's the big festival of the trees. You'll see those kind of events because they have a admission price generally, or a lot of them do, but the craft shows, they don't. So I mean, I get it, I totally get it. It's not a matter of getting it, but I also know, I, again, I digress just a hair, but I was asked by a good friend of mine to participate in kind of a conversation with a consultant from the Twin Cities about a building being considered by a community. And the dollar figures that we have to raise here to make this profitable down the road are a lot. And when you have the recreation sport component of hockey arenas or, let's call them ice arenas, because they're used by your figure skaters, they're used, and they go from little kids, three years old, all the way up to high school. Typically, a lot of those buildings lose six figures forever because of what you charge for the ice time. And it's not just an exclusive problem for, for here. But when we're renting out that beautiful facility over there, it's not like somebody put lipstick on the old Miners building, it's a world-class again, center and you have to charge accordingly.
Okay, thank you. Before we go to Counselor Freely, then Counselor Johnson, you made a comment about you don't do craft shows. Just to give you an example, there's a craft show that's held on Canterbury Downs twice a year, in April and in November. It is humongous. It takes out four different buildings and they generate interest from all the tri-state area. I go there every year, we have a, we take a charter bus down there every year because it, there's so many vendors and craft vendors that are there. Now, I'm not talking about the little vendor that, you know, that's, as a local, I'm talking about the big craft shows. So trying to bring a big craft show in really can be a moneymaker. They'll pay the fee, each individual booth charges X amount of dollars. I mean, they make a significant amount of money, I know that because, you know, I have a, a, a person that I know that's part of that process and it's amazing, you know, the amount of money and, and the things that they generate with respect to the economy. So, you know, moving forward, that's something we need to look at on a larger scale, right?
And again, those would be fabulous in the arenas.
Yeah, right.
Problem, they want to do them during the season when there is absolutely, as we found out with bumper, ice bumper cars, you have no ice time available.
Yeah, that's another issue altogether.
Well, I mean, I just, you're right though, you're absolutely right, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. That's for us to try to help you do that. So we'll go to Counselor Freely first, then to Counselor Johnson. Counselor Freely.
Mind-ranging discussion. And Counselor Johnson, I know you didn't mean this in any way, shape, manner or form, but if I was sitting here as a crafter that has repeatedly and consistently been providing my services or whatever at that, my goods, I'd have been like, wow, my show's no longer worthy of being at that new building? I mean, that's kind of what I interpret it to be. And if you build it, they will come and we want them to flock to there. The people we really want to flock to there are the ones that have always been there and will continue to be there. And I'm concerned about that. Even a rummage sale, I mean, people, rummage sales oftentimes proceeds are then donated in part to the homeless or to Habitat for Humanity, so they have good intentions and reasons to be there. So that's a concern of mine that we are treading on, like, you know, what kinds of events are worthy of being held there versus those that are no longer worthy because we're not in the building that we used to be? So that's one of my concerns. And then we'll probably get into this at another time, but maybe this is the time. I mean, you did allude, Tracy, that the naming rights potentially spurred some business to be wanting to be there? Is that what you were alluding to?
No, I didn't allude, I don't believe, I didn't mean to.
I mean, but that's a good thing. I mean, if we named it the Iron Trail Motors Event Center.
Was, was the naming rights a good thing? I, I, that's a, that's a six of one, a half a dozen of the I's.
I thought you said that upon that, that there was a spur of, okay, and so that's a concern of mine as well. And I think it needs to be discussed at this level. You know, there was some discussion with regard to the naming rights contract and whether or not we're meeting some of the language in that contract in the timely fashion that we were expected to do so and so on and so forth. And after reviewing some of the language that is in that contract, and I, I spoke directly to the ownership of Iron Trail Motors and I said, personally, I feel that it's really stifling to other businesses that want to be participating and contributing to activities and events and organizations that want to have things happen at that, at that venue. Well.
Counselor Freely, if I may, I, I apologize for interrupting, but I think that particular part of discussion, it will be under, under twelve on our agenda for a closed meeting to discuss that very issue.
Oh, okay, my bad. So.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, moving back towards where you're at, I, I guess, the one thing that took me aback when I went and bought a new phone the other day and I talked about the great opening, you know, week we had and should have seen the concert and the guy was like, concert? There was a concert? He lives three blocks from me, he's like, I never heard of any concert. And so I guess there are people that don't go online, there are people that are not on Facebook, they listen to the radio, they watch TV, they use the newspaper. So I'm just kind of wondering, what is the main source, the primary source of exposure for the events that we're putting on there?
Well, for grand opening week, as Britt can attest to, because I'm sure she signed or wrote out most of the requisitions, you are on all but one TV network in the region. You are on all of the Midwest Communications Radio stations across the range and KQDS in Duluth. You are also in sixty-some thousand emails from the Musabi Daily Tribune promoting the whole opening week, in addition, some ads, also the Hometown Focus paper and, and then again, social media. But this is a problem I deal with every day owning a marketing and public relations firm. People are getting their information. I had a senior expo last week. Somebody came up and said, well, I'm glad I talked to my friend, I didn't hear a thing about this. Well, it's been going on for twenty-two years. And, but the problem is everybody's getting their information from different places now and you're so right, some people get all their information from Minnesota Public Radio. They're not going to see it on any of those.
Thank you, and I do appreciate how widespread that was, but like I'm saying, people three blocks away, didn't even know anything was going on.
Absolutely.
It's frustrating.
I ran into the mayor the night, Brian and I ended up, Brian and I ended up going downtown on a Friday night and we actually grabbed probably like thirty posters and went into every single restaurant bar on the main drag and we ran into the mayor over at the.
Elks Club?
Elks Club. And yeah, so we, you know, we did a lot of traditional and mixed marketing, you know, there's a lot of different demographics, some people love newspapers still, some people like social media, social media can be hit or miss. So we, we try to make sure that we're really diverse with our marketing efforts and, you know, sometimes best marketing efforts are just going with the poster and putting them in a local business. That's where you get a lot of.
And not to mention that this was at the height of a pandemic as well, where people were not willing to gather in crowds. I mean, that was part of the issue.
And you still have that issue.
Yeah, thank you.
And I've heard you recently as WMNT promoting the Iron Range Motors Event Center. So I've heard three or four advertisements the last couple of days in that regard, so.
We try to be everywhere.
I, I hear it a lot, so thank you.
Spread the love, spread the love with that.
Spread them out. Counselor Johnson. Counselor Johnson.
I'm on our webpage and maybe this is a simple thing we can do where it says, buy rent under I want to, greenhouse rental, all cup building, Iron Range Event Center and a direct link to that webpage than that would take. Because when you go into Rec Deck, it says Iron Range, Iron Trail Motor Event Center, but there's nothing else there. So maybe that's something we can do too. So then we can direct people to go to our Parks and Rec webpage and it can jump right over to what your guys are creating with the new thing. So that was the one thing. And the other thing, we did have that discussion about add-ons when we were voting on those prices in this room as well. We did make that conscious effort as a council to say, yes, this stuff isn't going to be free anymore because it costs the city money. So I just, I remember thinking this is going to be a challenge. So I appreciate that you brought that up and that's what's different is it's not a one-shot covers everything anymore. People can choose what they need and you're right, if somebody needs more pipe and drape, maybe they can get it at a better cost than the city can because we are kind of locked in doing, being a government entity. So maybe it behooves them to rent their own pipe and drape for that show. Who knows? Thank you.
And there are a lot of buildings that won't even allow you to do that. They'll make you use theirs, but we don't have.
You don't have enough.
Enough to do that.
That's right. So I have a comment, just one quick comment before, if there's anything else. You know, I'm concerned and Counselor Freely touched upon it a little bit, I'm concerned about losing part of our community. And when you have these small community events can no longer use the Iron Trail Motors Event Center because it's way too expensive for them based on the pricing concepts. There's been discussion, well, let's just go to some other venue. Then go over someplace else cheaper, you know, they gotta pay the proper or too bad, too sad. Well, I think that we as a city, based upon the venues that we have available within our structure, our community structure, maybe it's time for us to take a look at what the costs associated with that. So if a small venue wants to hold a craft show or whatever and they, they can't afford to pay the pricing that's been approved by this body, elected body for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center, then we'll, we'll be able to accommodate them in some other city building as well. So, or whatever the case may be. Say, for example, in the summertime, if they can't be inside, maybe outside. But I think those are something for future discussion for us as an elected body. But I concur that moving forward with, you know, being consistent in the way we rent our facility and the way it's promoted, I think if we have to continue to move forward in order to make cash flow, make sure that financial reforma is, is, is being met, particularly from a $22 million facility, as Counselor Paulson said, to a $38 million facility.
And if I can add, Tyler did book and, and you, and the center did host a very successful craft event, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
And they're again this week.
So, and again this week? So I mean, they can be done. It's just, it's perception of the promoter as well, so.
Right. And not to belabor the discussion with people holding that event, you know, it's, it's, it's not a profit for them, it's a loss. So, but it's to provide a community event for those individual vendors and it was important for that to be a part of their group as a community to do that. So they're, they're pleased to have it there. They called me a couple of times and they have no problem, you know, with the, with the cost associated with that because they have, you know, a different focus. So, thank you. Okay, anybody else have anything they'd like to add? It's been really nice that you came here today to talk about.
Nice seeing all of you.
And for, and for having you put that on the agenda for us to discuss and clear the air and, you know, you know, stay focused on what we need to do. Counselor Biondich.
Thank you. You saw that out of the corner of your eye.
I saw your light on.
You did. And I appreciate that you brought up that we have hosted a few smaller venues, but I want to be very clear and very careful that when we start talking about working with, making everybody feel they can do that. Now we're opening the door for larger events and for weddings and so forth. So we have to be very careful about how we do that. And I'm glad to know that we were able to pull that off and make it a successful event for them. But there again, we're getting back to the cost of that building and what it does cost to maintain that building and have employees in that building. So we have to be very careful on that pricing structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. So if there's anything, nothing else, I think we've kind of clarified what we need to do. Thank you for coming. Thanks, Britt, for pointing this on the agenda and thank you for maintaining your professional decorum throughout this entire process because I know it's been tough for you, but you know, that's why we hired you. Do the good work.
We got pretty thick skin.
Thank you very much. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a request from Revive Virginia to approve the use of the parking lot and to block entrances to the parking lot and provide signage for the parking lot on the end of Chestnut Street on Silver Lake to conduct a fundraiser for the fireworks that'll be in conjunction with Festival of Trees on November 20th, 2021.
Counselor Johnson?
Is that whole lot owned by the city or some of it owned by Range Mental Health?
It's owned by the city. We allowed Range Mental Health to use the lot.
Okay, then I will move that we block it off and make sure we notify Range Mental Health appropriately, even though it is a Saturday.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
All support.
Is there support? Support by Counselor Paulson for the discussion. Counselor Freely.
Where are the fireworks being shot off from?
The beach.
The beach? That's what I thought. Because the last time, the best place to watch that from was this parking lot, just kind of FYI. So people are going to be surrounded somewhere else.
That's why Revive chose this spot, yeah.
Or from the roof of the Elks Club.
There you go.
Very good. Yes, thank you. Okay, so it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The city, the next item on the agenda is approve the resolution to hire Lori Perez as Accounting Clerk One. We had accepted applications and done interviews. We all agreed that Accounting Clerk One should be offered to Mrs. Lori Perez.
Moved. Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support? Support by Counselor Biondich to adopt the resolution to approve the hire of Lori Perez as Accounting Clerk One? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number eight is a travel request from Brian Silver.
Is it a little unusual that comes for the community home meeting? Looking for a motion or counsel action? Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually feel like this is done in jest and in spite of our fire chief's last request. And I am frankly very extremely offended that this is included in our packet.
Okay, thank you. Britt, let me see that travel request, please.
Mayor, may I continue?
I have a computer. Yes, Counselor Paulson?
So maybe I should just read what the actual travel request is from our Park and Rec Director to travel to St. Lucia Virgin Islands from November 6th, 2021 to November 15th, 2021. Means of travel, it doesn't really say anything. It says 56 cents a mile, estimated cost $130. Total estimated cost $130. Expected benefit of attending to research, golf course operations and recreational tourism, tourism opportunities to implement in the Virginia Park system. All cost of the research will be covered by the employee who would like to use the city vehicle and have the city cover parking expenses. And if someone could explain to me how or why this is in our packet, that any part of our city staff thinks that this is acceptable, I, I need to know right now. This is, this, this is wrong.
So the city vehicle to cover parking expenses, the city vehicle to, to go to the airport and park it there, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And to be paid for all those entire days. Are any continuing education credits being? Yeah, I, I, I just feel like this is in direct reference to what we just approved for our chief, who is actually obtaining 18 education credits and I am extremely offended because this feels like it is a joke.
Yeah, and I think if, as you alluded to, the chief is also presenting at the, a seminar at the seminar as well there and it's a similar cost coverage. So he'll be on the clock as requested, is that correct, Britt? Okay, thank you. Counselor Biondich?
Thank you. And I'll ask a question that I ask all the time. Is this covered by a grant? Has he gone out for money to receive dollars for the, for golfing? And are those dollars being used to support this?
We'll find out.
Yeah, so he's asking to be on the clock and $130, no meals, no nothing, just $130 in, in mileage reimbursement? Or is that just parking reimbursement?
Mileage reimbursement.
So if, if it's mileage reimbursement by using a city vehicle, how does that work?
To the parking, I'm assuming to the airport and back?
So it'll be, so, so I guess I'm looking at the, what it costs to park at the airport. Yes, all covered by, okay. All right, thank you. Counselor Biondich?
One more question. Could you tell me, has the golf course generated any revenue in the last five years?
It has generated revenue, yep. It's, has generated revenue to cover the costs associated with the operations, primarily the major expense with respect to the golf course losses are resulted from what they called depreciation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is that correct, Britt, Sherry? Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Okay. Further discussion, information, counsel action with respect to this travel request? Any further action that is to be taken by the elected body? Any questions, comments, concerns, or any motions? Okay, I'll ask, is there a motion to act on this travel request? Is there a motion to act on this travel request? Is there a motion to act on this travel request? The request is not approved to a lack of a motion. Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is an email that I received from Britt, I believe her last name is Ganganas from MPCA regarding the request for our floating loon to be brought down to the state fair, Minnesota State Fair in August for an exhibit that they have regarding eco experience. There are some pictures attached of what the exhibit would look like.
As, as we look at that, Britt, could you just move back to item nine?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then we'll take a look at that loon request.
That is item number nine. Discuss the request for the floating loon? Oh, sorry. Sorry, thank you. Yep, sorry. Revolution to hire Matthew Warren as patrol officer. Sorry about that. I'm looking at the old agenda.
Okay, thank you. Moved by who? Moved by Counselor Freely, supported by Counselor Biondich? Is there any further discussion? Thank you for accepting this job as a police officer. It's a tough, it's tough to get people to take jobs anymore, so appreciate that. Mr. Warren, so it was moved and supported to hire Matthew Warren as patrol officers. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and I apologize for my confusion. Back to the request from MPCA regarding the floating loon.
I think that's great.
I do have some hesitation. The loon is number one, not meant to be touched. So I do have concern about it being in a, in a very well-populated exhibit at a very well-populated fair.
They would have to take the necessary caution, care in, in of that, or we would have somebody down there doing that?
Would we have somebody down there doing that? And, and then the, the trailer that it sits on is not the best trailer. We would have to transport it also there and back.
Yeah, with all those restrictions, I still think it's a great idea. Counselor Freely?
I echo that also. I think it would be great to have that kind of exposure for the city of Virginia and the iconic loon that floats in Silver Lake. My biggest concern though is, does it have structural integrity to survive such a trip bouncing down the highway and on a trailer and so on? I don't know that, and I'd hate to see it ruined by trying to get this accomplished. But I think it's a great idea for giving us exposure to the city at the, at such a large venue such as the state fair.
Thank you, Counselor Freely. Counselor Johnson?
That was my concern too, that it's a fiberglass duck decoy meant to be transported a couple of blocks back and forth and sit in the water all summer. I would be, I'd have concerns about, the other thing I would be concerned about is how long is it going to be gone when it comes down to the practicality of getting it down to the state fair, getting it set at the state fair, being at the state fair for two weeks, how does it get back? When does it get back? So I, I think we, my, my thought is we send them a very nice thank you and let them know that we can send them pictures or anything else, but I, I think the loon needs to stay here just because it's, how many, how many times has it been repaired? Big picture, it's like two or three times that it's had a full body makeover. And when I've decorated it for the winter parade, she's feeling her age or it is feeling its age, I guess. It depends on who you talk to, what its name is and, and the gender of the loon. But I, I think we respectfully decline to send the loon to the state fair.
Thank you. Once again, I'm going to reiterate, I think it's a good idea if we, if we can overcome the logistics of it all and determine if it's, if it's, if it can be transported and if we have to have another trailer do it, we will have another trailer do it. This is my perspective. I also believe that they have the whole winter to take a look at to see if it needs to be structurally strengthened in some, some way and determine what we can do for, because it's a great opportunity for us to showcase, you know, the city of Virginia. So if, if logistically that can be overcome, I can't see a reason why we wouldn't want to display that because it's in August, two weeks. We take it out in end of September. So that's a concern as well. But I think it's not something we'll be doing every year, but for one year to showcase the city of Virginia, I think, I think the, overcoming the logistics is something that we need to take a look at moving forward. So thank you. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of comments. It says, let me know, the last paragraph, let me know if you'd be willing to have a conversation about this. Do we know if they have any dollars that would be able to help facilitate the travel, safe travel of the loon? Maybe not on the existing trailer, but on something safer? That would be one question that I would have if we are going to continue the conversation. Second conversation that I, or the second point I'd like to bring forward is the Tourism Bureau should have also dollars and the, the I triple R B is, you know, always looking for us for different ways as well to help the Tourism Bureau showcase our region. So if it would be safely possible to do it, I'm not sure why we wouldn't want to consider that as well as potentially tie in any events with the new Iron Trail Motors Event Center. And I would, I would think that they could rope around like they do often, a lot of the art, art attractions that you can't touch anyway because people, they don't want people touching them. So I would think that there would be a way to rope that off or block that off. But I, I think it warrants a further conversation if we could do it safely with little to no expense to the city and then possibly tie in any advertisement for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. I think that would be advantageous. Thank you.
Thank you. Great ideas, I think, Counselor Paulson. And based upon what's in the packet, maybe it would, it would be consideration for a motion to, to direct staff to call and enter in a conversation with the, with the board or the, the fair to determine what the needs are, you know, look at the parameters of the logistics of it, you know, what funding may be available, what they have, and continue to move forward with the conversation and then come back with a recommendation whether this is feasible to move forward with or not. So I think that would be a good idea. I mean, from my perspective. Okay, moved by Counselor Freely, is there support? Support by Counselor Johnson? Did you get that motion? The, the motion is to direct staff to make contact and enter in a conversation with the, with the fair board about potentially sending a loon down to the state fair for display and just have that conversation and then come back with a recommendation moving forward. Thank you. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Bearable?
I have a huge concern, Mayor, and fellow counselors. I want more information from this State Protection Control Agency and I'm going to tell you why. We're working, trying to get mining facilities up here in northern Minnesota and Rams is working very, very hard. hard. Now, are they going to use this loon as an display item of what mining and stuff may do to the population of loons on the Boundary Waters and the lakes? I don't want to see that happen, because we're defeating the purpose of trying to get more jobs and everything up here. I have a huge concern about that. And for that reason, I cannot support that, because I'm taking a position, if they're going to do that with ancillary displays in there that are becoming non from environmental groups, let's put it that way, that oppose that stuff happening, and you don't know what's going to be there unless you actually physically write to them or talk to them and ask them that question. This is important for jobs up here. So there's something to think about.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Bearbow. I think that would be part of the conversation with the, with the, with the board there with respect to what the purpose of it is, to glean all the information within that conversation, and then determine what the purpose and goal and objective is, and whether it's feasible from a logistics perspective for us to do that. So I think that should be part of the conversation as well. It's simply a conversation and making an inquiry, and we're not making a commitment until a recommendation, one way or the other, comes forward. Thank you. Counselor Biondich?
Thank you, and thank you for speaking before I did. But I was even thinking, if we don't, or we can't get the loon down there, would this be an opportunity for tourism to bring people here to see the loon without actually having it there? So there's many different ways to look at it. So I appreciate all the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. And the motion on the floor is just to have the conversation, direct staff to have the conversation moving forward and ask these questions that we've brought up and these issues that we had, to see if this is a feasible and a workable solution, and if we can approve it or not. So it has been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Please, roll call, please. Pam?
Biondich? Johnson?
Yes.
Aaron Zelli? Puffy?
Aye.
Bearbow?
No.
Freely?
Aye.
Paulson?
Aye.
Motion passes six, one. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an Ewell, Virginia Airport update.
Counselor Johnson?
I asked that this be put on so that the rest of council is aware that in the near future, the, there will be coming for approval from both councils. The Airport Commission, after some lengthy meetings by the Subcommittee for the Seaplane Base and Field across this road, have determined that it is in the best interest of the general public to no longer support the seaplane base. The, the field across the road, which used to be a private landing strip, when it became public property, no longer met the definition in the regulations of MinDOT to be a public landing field, landing grass strip, I guess is what they call it. And so for the last, at least three years, it has been closed, if not longer. The grass strip hasn't closed. However, it is continually being used by pilots, even though it is marked as closed with a big yellow plastic X, and we've made very clear to everybody that it is closed, because MinDOT says it's closed and unsafe. It was determined two meetings ago to let the contractor who runs the, uses the hangar for his business, that they would, that we would no longer be utilizing his, contracting with him, and that was effective yesterday. So there is no longer anybody there, and because it's the end of the season, the, the seaplane, the airstrips in the water, the landing, that doesn't change anything, but the city is no longer going to be maintaining that. And so the attorney for the organization that donated that to the city and the attorney for the Airport Authority are working out the revision clauses, and at some point, when that is done, it will be coming back to this council. And I don't know if it's an approval or an acceptance, but part of the revision is, is that if the authority chooses to stop operating the base, that it automatically reverts back. So that's kind of the really quick of what's happening, but I want you all to be aware that that will be coming forward in the next month or two. And as of last week, there are finally concrete barriers put up to stop people from driving and airplanes from going onto the grass strip. I have been out there personally and seen how, I, I've not witnessed an airplane land or, or takeoff, but it's, it's very obvious that there is continuously traffic on private, on, on the city property, not only to do improvements that shouldn't have been being done, that's been being mowed for the last three years, even though it's not been an operating grass strip. It's, we, it's a very frustrating thing for me, but it will no longer be something that, that the cities have to fund or worry about. The Airport Authority is autonomous, and it was a decision that was voted on unanimously by all the members present, and that process will be getting moved forward. And then I'm, when, when it is official, and we, there will be documents, and I'm going to have, make sure, we'll make sure Brian gets it so he can explain the legalese of what's coming from the airport attorney, which is a different firm. So there's, there's your airplane, your airport update.
Thank you. I'll just tack on to that. As you recall, we, Counselor Johnson and I sit on the board. Counselor Johnson sits on the Subcommittee for the Seaplane Base. It was, it was voted upon by the, the entire board based upon a recommendation by the Subcommittee that we no longer own that property. It serves no useful purpose for the airport. It doesn't actively support the Virginia Ewell Airport proper. It does not generate any revenue. It was privately owned and turned over to the Airport Authority and accepted by both city councils for the purpose of, of providing additional services. And all that seaplane base does is, it's a, it's, it's a maintenance facility that changes floats on the plane. Planes fly in, you know, they move up, they change the floats, and then, you know, they fly out, they put the floats back on, but it doesn't generate any revenue. Taconite Aviation, which has a separate contract, had a separate contract with the Rude Group, who's going to retake over this airport, take it back as a private entity, will continue to likely operate for them as a contract for basis. Right now, the, we own the airport seaplane base. We employ the, Taconite Aviation is a separate entity, but the airport manager also operates Taconite Aviation. We have a cease and desist order for them, him not to, not to act as an agent or a, an employee of the Airport Authority at the seaplane base. So we're in the process of reverting that back, like Counselor Johnson indicated, triggering the reversionary clause in that contract and turning it back over to the private entity, and so they can operate it the way they deem appropriate, and they can make the applications for whatever they need to do to make any improvements in order to continue operate it as a private entity. But it serves no useful purpose at the airport in any way, shape, or form, and it, and by returning it over to the private entity, it, it doesn't have any negative effect on how our airport operations move forward. So that does kind of a little addendum to Counselor Johnson's report. Okay, so stay tuned. Counselor Bearbow?
I have an issue with that, okay?
Sure.
You can land a float plane and get a service to take the floats off.
Mm-hmm.
Then when you come back to put the floats on, you can't land it in the water. You've got to have a strip close to get the floats on. So has other arrangements been made with our authority? Because we have people within this community in Ewell that have float planes that use that strip. They need to revise and get the authority from the state by lengthening that strip to make it legal. So how, where are they going to go? They're going to go to another community, use the hangars as another place, get rid of their hangars here. So they're going to lose revenue at our side, at the Ewell Airport, Virginia Airport, because they hang them there. So how, how is that a feasible, smart thing to do? There's other grass strips all around. O'Keehan's, it doesn't have one, but they don't land on the runway. They're laying between the runway on the grass. International Falls and Cook are the same way, because they tear up those tires on asphalt and wreck them so they can potentially have a crash.
Well, in
About that, too. Where are they going to land?
Well, in answer to your question, I think I can answer that for you, Counselor Bearbow. The, the grass strip had a, had a permit from the state of Minnesota.
I know, they let it go.
Right, they, they let it go. So now, in order for us to improve their grass strip, there's certain kind of requirements we have as a public entity with respect to that. As a private entity, they can go to the state of Minnesota, they can re, they can re-up their license if they want. They can make the improvements based upon what the requirement of the state is for the state of Minnesota, not the FAA, not the Federal Aviation Administration, but the state of Minnesota. And they can do that very same thing, they continue to operate like they did before. They turn it over to the, to the city authority.
That's true, but we still have our fingers in it, because it's still under the city's name with the Airport Authority. We still own it. The Airport Authority still owns it. Has Ewell agreed to this, the council, to do the same thing?
They have. They have.
I don't see how you can not have a mixture when the, the property was given to the city. We'd have to give it back to somebody, you know, that's in ownership then of that private entity. We can't charge them for it. We have to give it to them.
Well, they gave it to us, we're going to give it back to them. That's, that's the goal.
Okay, if that's, if that's what you're going to do, then I'm okay with it. But other than that, I'm not okay with it.
Yeah, we're just going to exercise
There's other illegal operations all over the state where they don't land where they're supposed to. So.
Yeah, well, we, we don't want to be responsible as a public entity for that very issue. Private entity, they can do whatever the heck they want, but it's a, it's exercising the reversionary clause, just, just deeding it back over to them at no cost.
Okay, so we're going to do that, then?
We are.
Okay, then that makes, that's a whole different ballgame then. Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Bearbow.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the update, Counselor Johnson. Britt?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a closed meeting for attorney-client privilege regarding potential litigation. No, there is no, that's just an update.
It will come back to us once the, once the legal documents are filed and is ready for, for, okay, thank you. Okay, so looking for a motion to go to closed session. Oh, Counselor Johnson?
Mayor, I would make a motion that we go into a closed session after a 10-minute break.
Okay, let's move, by Counselor Johnson, move into closed session. Is there support? Support, and we'll entertain that closed session in 10 minutes before, take a break before we go to closed session. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.